I call the June fifth, 2025 regular meeting of the Whittier Port and Harbor Advisory Commission at 6:03 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, a free republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin tonight's meeting, please note that digital copies of tonight's meeting packet are available on our website. A QR code is provided just outside the door or in the top left-hand corner of the YouTube video. Open your phone's camera to scan the code and you'll be able to easily access the packet. Madam Clerk, real close, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Loane? Here. Mr. Hill?
Present.
Ms. Yelverton? Here. Mr. Carlson?
Here.
Mr. Goldstein?
Here.
Mr. Chair?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Citizen comments? Citizen comments on any agenda item except those scheduled for public hearing are welcome at this time. Those who have signed in will be given the first opportunity to speak. Please note, this is not a time for dialogue. It is a time for you to speak and the commission to listen. Okay. No one has signed in. Moving on. Approval of agenda and consent agenda. Is there an objection to approving tonight's regular meeting agenda and consent agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Say.
Voting on the motion to approve the agenda and the consent agenda, Ms. Loane? Yes. Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Yelverton?
Yes.
Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
The motion passes and the agenda and consent agenda are approved. On tonight's consent agenda are the approval of the April 3rd, 2025, regular meeting minutes.
Onto presentations and reports. I don't have any here, but Dave, do you have a report or is that coming up next? Okay, so I jumped ahead of myself, but, okay. I do not have a report. Trey, have you got a report?
I do not.
There you go, Harbor Master Borg, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have three pages of a report. So we missed May, so, yeah. I've got, you threw me off. Yeah, we'll talk about these things there, right? Yeah, okay. So I just wanted to give a quick update on some of the things that we're working on. We've hired Regina Aniva here, Turi Turi, to act as our harbor finance gal. She's got a deep background in financing. She's also, that wasn't me. She's worked here locally with another individual who owns a boating company, a boat-type company. So she's familiar with a lot of our terminology, our systems, and our customers. So welcoming her aboard. She's a fast learner. She's already hitting it solid. So I'm excited to have her in the office. The Waterfront Economic Development Plan, they reached out to me mid, I think, early May, rather. And they had some more fine-tuning they wanted to do. They hadn't gotten a whole lot of feedback from our PAC, so they were reaching out to them to get a little bit more information. I think we're going to see something on that in the coming week or so before we go live for public comment. And it'll be open for a 45-day public comment. And I'm going to rely a lot on you folks to make sure that we're getting the word out on that, so more to follow. I'm going to kind of jump around here a little bit, but last week we had a deadhead float into the harbor and found its way up underneath the whiskey float on the very far west side, around float 26 and 28. Jammed itself under about the only 12-inch-wide area it could find, and it found it. Tide went out, it's 20-foot pole jammed up underneath the hinge plate for one of the fingers, and it lifted the float about 15 feet up in the air, caused some wood, some damage to the wood, and some sisters that are underneath the dock planking. It's going to be a little while before we can get it taken care of. We recovered all of the floats and foam that was in the water, and we managed to, once the tide came back in and lifted off the floats, we got the pile out from underneath and got it up on the beach and got rid of it. So we're going to have a little bit of damage to that whiskey float on the very end. That's usually where the Forest Service ties up, so we've relocated them, but we'll come up with a plan in the coming weeks to take care of that. Fish cleaning float, still working on some strategies with that. And as I was working on funding, a funding line or funding string for that, somebody sent me a really cool picture. Test, test. There we go. All right. So that, so we're fish cleaning float, got sent something from Valdez. I'm going to, I reached out to Valdez. Everybody's busy right now. Haven't been able to really talk to anybody in charge of that program, but that is on my list of things to do and finish up on. I don't think the state will have funding until 2027. So that's a problem, but we may be able to find something in the MRF. We may have to pay for that out of pocket. I'm not certain just yet. But anyway, it's still on the list of things to do. We got our shipment of the digital meters in, and so Kyle actually started installing those today. And those are the, remember, that's the digital, that'll give us the opportunity to go from handwritten analog meter reading for our power to digital meter reading to Wi-Fi signal to the harbor, which will be able to do all automatically, which will be really nice. We got our kiosks in last two weeks ago, and we got them installed yesterday, or I'm sorry, Tuesday. The one at the launch ramp is 100% functional. The one at the office, there was something wrong with a wire that needed to be replaced. We trouble shot it, found the tech trouble shot it, found a problem with a wire that is en route here. So we should get that, I'm thinking Saturday, and we'll get the other one by the office up and running. But they seem to be, the one at the launch ramp's making money already. People seem to like them. They run really smooth. You can do multiple-day parking, multiple-day camping on them. So yeah, it's a good deal. Let's see. Just trying to make sure I'm not covering other stuff. Okay, we got 125, 125,000 Coho early May, and we've released them already, and we're receiving the Chinook mid-June for the net pen, and we'll have them for about two weeks and then cut them loose. We've got a bunch of new signage around the harbor, if you hadn't noticed. I'm trying to phase out the permit parking only to paid parking only because that just seems to make more sense to me and to the public as they come in looking for permits. Public Works, huge kudos to them for completing the dirt work around the pavilion and the breakwater. They did a fantastic job with that. It almost looks like concrete. But we had suffered some pretty major damage from a storm we had early on in December, and they did just an amazing job fixing that up and making it safe for all our visitors and the locals as well. Clean harbors over here. Yep, I'll pass on that. One of the big issues we're working on, we hired a consultant to come in in May to go over some of our our programs, and we've discovered some serious issues with our Marina Office program that we use for accounting and for billing. And we also use QuickBooks, and we use a QuickBooks desktop version, which is no longer supported by QuickBooks, so that's a problem. So we're currently working on going to a Marina Go program, which is the same program we're using now, only it's in the cloud. It's cloud-based, and we'll also be looking at swapping over to QuickBooks in the cloud as well. We just went through an audit, and we did discover some problems that are, that arisen with transferring information from QuickBooks over, or from Marina Go over to Quick, sorry, Marina Office over to QuickBooks. And for some reason, there was a proration going on there, and we have to manually go in and change all our monthlies to a quantity of one. Well, we missed some. So that showed up in an audit, and it's going to cause some problems. Chris will also be addressing that in the coming weeks. But we just, out of the, you know, in some cases, last in 2024, we had 270 monthly users in the harbor. So we just, instead of charging them, you know, a quantity of one, we charged them .096. So it does not shine well for us, but we'll, I think one of the things that'll fix that is actually getting into QuickBooks and programming it the way it needs to be. But, you know, one of the things that I think is, is an issue is that we, you know, we constantly change our fee schedules, and, you know, if we're off by a penny, then it's going to cause a problem. So that very well. I'm not a finance person. I am a harbor master, so I rely heavily on folks that do finance for a living. So we will be getting help with that. More to follow. We did, actually, we were using Marina Go years ago. We were trying to migrate out of Marina Office to Marina Go, and we just had so many problems with QuickBooks because Marina Go really likes to use the cloud-based QuickBooks, and we were trying to force it to use the desktop version. So we had a lot of synchronization problems, and heck, it might have came even come from that when we got rid of Marina Go and went back to Marina Office. I don't know, but follow the bouncing ball with me. I chaired a safety committee meeting for the citywide safety protocols. Did that last month or this month? I still need to get minutes out. Was that last month? It was last month. I provided opening remarks for the Prince William Sound Stewardship Foundation in the absence of the city manager while she was back in DC. I also did an online city rep for the Veryarm monitoring team that was basically nationwide, just kind of filling them in on some things that are going on in the city. And I attended a tsunami inundation workshop that was held here in Whittier. That was really interesting to hear about. So I think I've got everything down with the exception of, I got an email from Victor Parks and Rec a couple of days ago asking about some kayak issues. He was primarily asking when we were going to look at putting in the float at the passenger dock. I sent the folks that, he sent that out to a reply with an email of the weather last, or Tuesday, where we had like two- and three-foot swells rolling through the area. I don't think what we want to put there will survive there. However, I don't want to shoot that program down completely because we actually did put some money in the CIP fund for that. And I'm going to, I've got a meeting next week with a outfit over in Big Lake that builds those floats, poly floats. They carry two different brands to see and kind of go over some options and some ideas of what we've got going on and what might work there, what might not. So I don't want to put something there, to put something there because it's on the CIP, and then six months later, it's broken and it's laying on the beach in pieces. It just doesn't make like, just doesn't seem like good stewardship. So I want to make sure what we do is going to work. We did get the kayak fee plugged into the passport application. It also shows up on both kiosks. I believe that fee number is 2020 or 9020? I think that's what, or is it 1920, 9020? So that's live, and we are working on some signage. We've got a lot of irons in the fire right now. I've got like 15 projects about three-quarters of the way done. And with this audit going on, with Phase 3 going on, with just everything we've got going on, Kyle kind of jumped into the finance role for a while. He's done a fantastic job. I couldn't thank him enough for everything that he's been doing. He's been wearing the Deputy Harbor Master hat and the Harbor Finance hat. So he's been doing just a fantastic job. And so I'm hoping over the course of the next couple of weeks, we can kind of start putting all the little things together and the fires out. So I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Any questions for Harbor Master Borg? Ms. Loane?
I guess the only thing I was interested in is if you had like a quick takeaway from the tsunami presentation, like what that might look like for the harbor front in Whittier and like our pedestrian tunnel, things like that.
Run. I, you know, I've been doing this for a long time, you know, this disaster response. You know, I've responded to a couple of hurricane. As much as we would like to provide a safe place to be, some locations are just not zero-fault situations. We're, you know, we're going to have something, even 64. You know, we had water here within seconds because it happened subterranean, subterranean. So I think it was very eye-opening. And, you know, another thing that I learned, that part of the inundation, the reason it didn't come further up here was because we had huge concrete buildings down on the marginal wharf, and that blocked a lot of them. A lot of that wave action, so they're not there now. But I think it definitely is an eye-opener to say, okay, what would we do? I mean, Japan's done some amazing things, built, you know, bulletproof buildings in their highly impacted areas, high-risk areas for people to evacuate to. Is that something we want to do here? I don't know. But it's definitely probably way out of our funding ability. I think the best thing is just make people aware and make sure that you have a plan. Folks that live here, that are subject to the waterfront, have a plan.
Commissioner Goldstein?
Yeah, I was going to save this for the comments, but since this topic has been opened here, I attended two meetings, and there are a couple of takeaways over there. First of all, if the tsunami occurs up in Harriman-Fjord, we've probably got about 20 minutes. And using the tunnel, pedestrian tunnel, to get the heck out to higher ground is an option. But if there's an earthquake that shakes so much that you have to grab something to keep from falling down, you don't want to go to the tunnel. So I think the tsunami warnings have been, or the tsunami signs have been taken off of that now, which is a very smart idea. One of the solutions was to create some kind of elevated structure over, close to the waterfront, maybe in the parking lot. Kind of an elevated parking lot, so it serves, you know, two purposes or multiple purposes. But it offers people right there at the waterfront the opportunity to get to higher ground. The other takeaway from that, very interesting, because initially, when the inundation maps were done, we were basically looking at the water coming up basically to about Whittier Street. And then, of course, we had this kind of a bravado-type idea that, oh, we're going to have the water come a lot higher, and of course, this was all dependent on tides also. But the new information creates an even worse picture, and it's based on the subduction of the land itself. And they're looking at the water getting all the way up to Keno Street. So it's a serious problem. Obviously, we're not going to do this, you know, tomorrow or find a solution, but it's something to really keep kind of looking at, maybe pursuing some mitigation funds. I think FEMA has, as part of any disaster, there are mitigation funds that are available, so the incident doesn't happen again. And this may be a real good time to kind of look at that and basically research what other communities have done, as Harbor Master Borg has mentioned. But it's a significant thing. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, moving on to resolutions, which there are none, and then on to other new business. First item up on other new business would be the request for a waiver of fees that you'll see in the back of your packet, and I'm sure Harbor Master Borg has some background for.
Thank you, Cheryl Zanuck. So you'll see an email that I included, and I'm just, I'll leave the name out and as far as the public, my discussion here goes. But I was approached by this individual who has had a slip in the harbor since 97. And for the last several years, he has not had a boat in that harbor, in the harbor, due to medical issues, medical reasons. And he called me a couple of months ago and asked that, back in March, actually, and asked that I might waive the fee due to medical situation. I am not, so I told him, I said, well, we don't really have an avenue for that in our code. However, not wanting to be the sole decision-maker, and we do have this body, and we do make recommendations to council because that's what I would be asking you to do, depending on how we decide to go here. I did say that if you send me an email, that I will bring it up to this body to discuss. So I open for discussion.
Commissioner Goldstein?
I think, I can't recall a situation in the past where there's been a precedent that's been set for this. And I think in the back of my mind, I'm thinking, if we do this, we open the door to other individuals with similar issues. I do note that apparently in 2022, 23, and 24, this gentleman paid the fees, but did not have a boat in the harbor. Is that correct?
Correct. He did not put his boat in, right?
Right.
So we were hot birthing it.
Right. So while I, I'm sympathetic to the issue, I don't see why '25 should be different than '24, '23, and '22. I just wonder if there's a way that maybe the fee can be delayed or whether, I don't even know where the boat is. I don't know if it's on harbor property or it's on, in the boathouse or where it's at. But maybe, maybe that fee could be used to offset or stored on harbor property instead of a private property, which he's probably paying for. So he would at least get some value for that. Yeah, it's just, it's a very tricky thing. I feel sympathetic, but I also realize that if we open the door to this, then we're probably going to open the door to a lot of other ones, too. I do think that Harbor Master should have some discretion in this, but I don't want to put you in a position or the city in a position where, you know, everybody's begging, begging to have their fees delayed or forgiven.
Commissioner Carlson?
It's not often that people get asked to help out in a way, right? And especially nowadays, people don't ask in a letter like this. I mean, you read this, and there's a lot of humility put in this, in a sense. And while, I mean, cities aren't necessarily in the business of making money, and yes, this would open it up for a lot more headache down the road, but at the same time, like, if there's a way to help somebody, I feel like if there's an avenue for that, we should do that. Or at least, I mean, my suggestion is to help out this individual any way we can within reason. And I get it may open up us or the city or even you, Dave, to get maybe bombarded with more of these case-by-case basis, right? Everybody that works for the city, the government, or even sits up here, it's kind of the job to wade through some of that stuff. And if I was, I don't know, if I was the boss, this would be a no-brainer to me, and I would say absolutely, I'll, we'll help you out. But that's my opinion.
Ms. Loane?
Yes. Is he asking for reimbursement of everything that he's paid the last few years? Or is he asking for, I just want to be clear, is he asking just for like, to have his dues waived for this year? Or what was?
So he's asking to be, he's asking us to waive the second half of 2025.
Okay.
Because he's paid the first half and maintain ownership of, or assignment of the stall.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear. Yeah, on the one hand, I do kind of worry what it will open up to, but I do, on the other hand, agree with Mr. Carlson that I feel like this is a pretty extreme case. This isn't like, oh, I broke my leg. I can't come for summer, you know? I, I don't know. It is, it is a tough decision, but I, I would say that I would not have a personal problem with this if it did not cause an extreme issue elsewhere.
Ms. Yelverton?
Thank you, Cheryl Zanuck. I love the commentary. I would just like to point out that I think there is precedent, not necessarily for this Ports and Harbor Commission, but in many governing bodies for an application for fee waivers. Even the IRS gives you some options for that. So there is precedent, and I think that as a commissioning body, we can certainly say, you know, we can follow where we think this is the right avenue to go, and I would certainly support that in this case.
Commissioner Goldstein, do you have another comment?
Yeah, just one more question here. It's my understanding that he's basically paying $2,000 a year, 2022, 23, 24, and 25. And he's asking, he's already paid half of the 2025, which would be $1,000.
I'm not exactly sure of the exact dollar amount, but.
Yeah. And the city is making money on the slip there as far as occupancy without, without him. Yeah, it's a, it's one of those things that I think in my mind sets a precedent. We don't have anything, any guidelines on this. I would feel a lot more comfortable if we had something in code, you know, giving the Harbor Master that authority. Yeah. I'm afraid I'm going to have to vote no on this.
I'll chime in with all those comments in there. But first thing I would bring up, I suppose, maybe for everybody to consider, something I struggle with is to be sure that we have a stronger mind than our emotions, stronger mind than stronger emotions. We don't have a vehicle in place currently for Harbor Master to make a call on it, for sure, just like everybody. I empathize, I sympathize, I everything with this, but we don't have, we don't have an application in place to apply. So it's almost one of those situations that could trigger a future thing that needs to be added to something. I can speak also to having been in a situation with zero medical condition, but having paid the same fees with the same situation. the same fees with the same situation, and not asking for a consideration. That said, it's a completely different situation, but there's no separate application for such a feature. So I think that's the thing that I would, I would lean on. I don't, I'm glad I'm not in your position, Harbor Master Borg, but I would, I would have to sort of not side with, but agree with Commissioner Goldstein, that we just don't have anything in place that helps us make a good decision, unfortunately, especially in this individual's situation. The other thing I suppose that's maybe a blessing that he may not see is if he has any hope to come back to the harbor, because there's also nothing in code that says if you don't have a boat, you lose your slip whether you pay or not. That's codified, that I understand, right? He can come back to the harbor without having had lose his, lost his slip. And I would add to that, that God forbid, sir, anything happened to me, or I miss four or five seasons in the Whittier Harbor, I sure hope you guys let me come back, if I'm paying. But it's definitely a tough one, but I would, that that, I'll close with what I started with, is that remember to have, especially in these situations, a stronger mind than we have our emotions. Anyone else have any comments? Commissioner Trey, I did not forget you were there, but I was reminded you are. Did you have anything to add to that?
No, I mean, you and Dave said it pretty much. There's no guidelines, there's no vehicle, there's no code for us. This guy is in an incredibly difficult spot, and it sounds to me like he has some real hard decisions to make personally, whether he wants to move forward with having a slip in the harbor or not. The business minded side of me thinks, you know, we're really not in a position to, you know, be given a lot of handouts or opening these types of doors. So, I mean, half of me, my moral clause is pulling at me, you know, morally, emotionally, but I would be a, I'd be a no, that, you know, the fees are due, and that's it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Loane?
I guess my next question would just be, how would we safely put something in place? Like, is there a way to do that moving forward? Or is that just like a can of worms that should never be opened?
So I think what happens in 2026, and let's think about folks that are on the waitlist. You know, we've, I think we are opening ourselves to a nightmare of what ifs. I think the code is written very firmly and fairly, and makes it very easy for us to make a decision. But again, I thought, with this, with, seeing as the individual asked, I thought it prudent to bring it forward to this body. But, you know, I, what happens in 2026? Do we start over again? I will say this, that harbors are not moneymakers without the opportunity for us to hot berth stalls. That is where we keep our head above water, when we can put boats and stalls that are already assigned. Every harbor in Alaska does it. There's a few that actually credit folks that, well, they used to, that, you know, if they've got a, if they've got a stall assigned to them, and then somebody comes in, we hop, that individual hot berth that stall, that they would get a certain kickback for letting them do that. But that even has has ceased because it turned into such a, I left 10 minutes before the other guy, why did you put him in that stall and not, you know, mine? And so it, we have enough loopholes right now, that I'm trying to close them off. And I've already had three or four this week come to light, that I've got to deal with in the coming weeks. So I, I, like you, am very empathetic to this situation. Stalls in Whittier are highly coveted. And, you know, they, I think if we go down this road, I would not be surprised to see somebody say, I had back surgery, I had a broken leg, I went through X, Y, Z, you name it, and can I get a waiver for my fees for this second half? So I would just throw that out there and for consideration. Thank you.
Ms. Yelvorten.
Thank you, Chair Olsonak. I agree with all of that. That's super prudent to think about. The one thing that I would side, you know, kind of agree with Ms. Loane is, if we have a process for an application, that doesn't mean we have to say yes, right? It's a case by case, we can evaluate it on its merits, and that doesn't mean it continues from year to year. It can be a one time fee waiver, they have to reapply. Now, how much work would that be for you, for your staff, or for whoever had to make those decisions? It could be significant, or it could be not. But I think at the end of the day, when we are hot birthing these stalls, the harbor's making more than if someone just had their boat sitting there. That's all.
The term making more isn't really, so how do I do my budget? How do I do my budget? I mean, I know I can budget out for the, you know, for the stalls that I currently have filled, right? So we know that's a known amount of money within, you know, a couple of 10 grand, maybe plus or minus. Our, our wild card is launch ramp, parking, and then transient monthly and daily transient mortgage, winter mortgage, 30, 40 grand a year, it's nothing. So I do count. It does make a difference, you know, at the end of the day. Maybe one or two, maybe not. If we come up with a, well, and then there's the administrative hassle of kind of track all that. Like, okay, we gave this guy a six month, or this gal a six month reprieve. Now everybody stops paying annually, and they just pay every other month, which, or every six months. I don't know, just, it's not an easy decision.
Commissioner Goldstein.
Yeah, I I just have two more questions here. I'm unclear whether in 2022 through 24, fees were paid, but the boat was not in the harbor. Is that correct? Okay, so we we basically have a situation where if a person gets a slip or is assigned a slip, they have one year to put a boat in there, correct? So do we also have a stipulation that if a person misses, or doesn't have a boat in there for over a year, that that the slip then is assigned to the next person on the waitlist?
It's a little less clear, only because we do have folks that pull boats out, and they do work on them, and sometimes it lasts two or three years. I remember this discussion specifically with when we redid Title 12, and we wanted to be real careful around this, this conversation, and and to not, people that were assigned stalls, if they didn't have a boat in there because the boat was out. So we we kind of look at this situation in the same light. The other issue that we, you know, that was brought up is vessels that haven't moved out of stalls. Now, that's a different story. They're taking up space, but they don't move. So they're basically in wet storage. That's a whole nother can of worms that we're going to be opening up here in the coming months. So we'll talk more about that. But that is a good point. But I do remember specifically, I believe it was Mr. Pincush that wanted to protect folks from that situation, that, hey, you haven't had a boat in there for a year, you're out.
The the other part of that question is, this not only opens the door to future issues like this, but it also opens the door to past experiences. And I know of two or three people who had actually back surgery was one, and there was another surgery by somebody else, and they could not put their boat in into the harbor, and they paid the fee, and then recovered, and and again, put the boat in there. But this opens the door to them saying, hey, you know, you exempted this person, how about giving me my money back?
Yeah, I think in listening to both sides of the the comment, I think that the leniency from the harbor master, correct me if I'm wrong, comes in that you've been assigned a stall, and you are paying, and there's some reason you you can't, there's been a delay on the boat you're having built for your stall, you're you're replacing that boat with a new boat, and it's taking longer, you've had a medical condition, you notify the harbor master, hey, we are still paying, we would still like our stall, harbor master says, okay, but never in those cases are you asking, I'd like to also keep it and also not pay for it. So it does make it unique if you, if you, again, if I go back to, if you take the emotional part out about the reason, and go back to the practicality of it, it, for me, anyway, and I don't know if we're voting on this or not, but for me, it's a, it's a hard emotional decision, but it's an, is an easy decision that we have some rules that we're just sort of, for today, we follow, right? So, anyway. Any other comments? I don't know what we do with that at the end of it, but I think you've gotten all your feedback, Harbor Master, so you get to go back to your office and search your soul. Can can he ask us to vote on it?
Let's vote on it. How'd you like to proceed? I told him I'd bring it to the body. I've brought it to the body.
Hey, let's, I think that's, I think it's fair. If that's something that we can do, I think it's fair. You're asking us for help?
Well, and this would be a vote to take it to the council for their approval, because we cannot financially make that decision. We would have to move it up to the council for their, so.
So we'd be either voting to have council make a decision, and so in support of whichever way, or wouldn't be bringing it to council at all.
Right.
So, Madam Claracotta, we proceed with that?
Either someone could make a motion to support the request and direct the harbor master to bring it to council. That's option one. Option two would be to deny the request, to make a motion to deny the request. Yes, you do have to make a motion. That is, that is correct.
Does anybody, are there any, are there any commission members who would like to make a motion either way? Seeing none, based on what I've heard, I would make a motion to deny the request, or to vote for the deny the request, or whichever that would be.
So the question is, the motion is to deny the request. First by Chair Olsonak, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Yelvorten. Did you want to continue discussion, or are you ready to vote?
Are there any, is there any more discussion? Commissioner Hill? Trey? Hearing none, ready to vote?
Okay. Voting on the motion to deny the request. Ms. Yelvorten?
Yes.
Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
No.
Mr. Hill? Mr. Hill, are you able to speak? I'll come back. Ms. Loane?
No.
Mr. Chair?
Wait, yes, sorry.
The motion is to deny the request. If you say yes, then you agree to deny.
Yes.
And Mr. Hill, are you there? No, he's not muted. Okay, we'll call him absent for this one. Mr. Chair?
No.
How do you vote? Uh, no, do not deny the request? Okay. So the motion passes four to one, and the request is denied, just for clarification.
I'll reach out to the individual tomorrow. Thank you. I know that's a very difficult situation, very difficult decision, but I think it was a well thought out, well discussed, so.
Then I would add that I don't know, and I don't know if anything is spinning around in anybody's head in the audience who has experience in this, but, you know, I don't know if there's any in the future, you know, should we have went the other way, and then just not got the votes, versus going the way we went and getting support, you know? Just, that's where my head goes, but I too am glad to hear the dialogue and the discussion, and it's, it just, it is what it is. Okay, so we're moving on to number three on other new business, commercial dumpster, Harbor Master Borg.
All right, thank you. So I'm keeping an eye, right now, we've got our fancy new eight yard dumpsters. They seem to be working really well, with the exception of humans closing the lids, but we're getting there. We're getting there. I know Mr. Carlson made an entire video, and apparently hasn't gone viral enough. So we got the little signs even on it that say, click it. I haven't gone to click it or kill me with a picture of a bear yet, but that's next. So I just know I'll get pushed back from some people. Anyway, they are working well. But we are filling them up, as I knew we would. A lot of it's with commercial trash. Another issue is, we've got a lot more little trash cans around town this year than we did last, to try to keep up with it. So I reached out to Alaska Waste to see what the opportunity might be for a 20 yard dumpster that would be specific to our leaseholders down in the, in the triangle, or not in the triangle only, but I mean, in our waterfront area. I would suggest that we might put it up at like the head of the bay with a lock on it, and give them a key that they would have access to only, that they could take all their trash to and dump it there. That way, we would have plenty of room for our, our patrons in the harbor, the water, you know, the people that are using the harbor. So I reached out, and I talked to them. A delivery fee is 520 bucks. It's $192 a month rental. Each haul would be about $1,200, and it's a $202 a ton. So I'm not certain what a 20 yard dumpster holds, but I'm guessing it would probably be a fair amount. So I've got to noodle this out a little bit more. What I'm doing right now is we're just kind of watching the situation, where it's at, and, but I know we could definitely fill it up with just the trash that we're dumping around town in our, in our small garbage cans. But that's just something that I'm working on right now. I would suggest that we probably would see this in operation sometime in July. So I would ask Chris for some CPV money to help offset the cost of that, because it is a majority of our visitors that are using that. I know our, our budget's been set, but I don't know, we'll see what we can do. But I'm, I'm anticipating about $160,000 this year in trash. So it's pretty spendy. It's not cheap. So I just wanted to throw that out there and let you know the plan on that. Thank you.
Commissioner Carlson.
202.
Is that a 20 yard? You said that you're looking at 20 yard?
Correct.
Max rated capacity for a 20 yard is 6,000 pounds, three tons.
Good to know.
I used to work on dumpsters in a previous life, so I mean, in theory, maximum weight capacity, 6,000 pounds, three tons, plus, what'd you say, it was $1,200 a trip? Ooh, correct.
Yeah, nothing cheap about trash, especially here. And we pay a premium because we're just outside the borough of Anchorage. Yeah.
But the, I think that thing that I think about is, if we can isolate out the visitors from the businesses utilizing it, maybe there's something we can hand over to council later that says, these are the folks that need to be paying these fees, and these are the folks that should be paying these fees. Because right now, we don't know where all the garbage is coming from, but this might be a way to hone in on it.
Absolutely.
It's not, and it's not a call out, but it's, it's nice to understand, it's been going on for my entire life in Whittier, so it would be nice to figure out where, you know, and the best way to structure fees, to, so that they're going to the right. Exactly. Any other comments or questions on that one? Great job, Commissioner Carlson, on the exact facts and statistics of a 20 yard dumpster. Commissioner Loane?
I was just gonna say, the, you said you estimated about 160 K in trash this summer, or for the whole year?
I was just gonna say, the, you said you estimated about 160K in trash uh, this summer, or for the whole year, or?
It works out to be the summer.
The summer, yeah, I figured.
Winter is nothing.
And that is, that is just what, like, the harbor is, or the city is spending?
No, that's what the harbor spends.
That's what the harbor.
Yeah, last year was about 140K out of our budget.
That's what I.
We pay for everybody.
Okay. Just wanted to make that clear.
It's a point of contention for me, but I march on.
Anyone else? Okay, hearing none. Commissioner Hill, are you back? Okay, we'll move on to uh, other new business, number four, update on um, harbor rebuild phase three.
Man, we are moving right along. Um, pile has been ordered, floats are in production. Electrical pedestals are all been ordered, um, electrical wire is uh, available. Um, we actually got a payment from the state last week, which is exciting, we got a little bit of money um, for the grant. And uh, all we're waiting on right now is permits, the IHA permit is out right now with a public hearing that closes on the 5th of July, so that's for the um, incidental harvest or incidental take of marine mammals, so that comment period's out as of to, tomorrow, today, yeah, today, so it's out for 30-day notice. So we're moving right along, pretty exciting. I think, oh, and uh, they got our dock shack too, that's in, it's over in Valdez, so that's good. Uh, and then, so I, I'm, we're on target tracking for late August. Uh, about the only real challenge we're gonna have right out of the gate is um, just lay down space where to put all this stuff, so. Any questions? I'm standing by.
Any questions from the commission? Thanks, harbor master Borg. It is exciting actually to hear that there's things, tangible items on their way. Yeah, not, yeah, exactly, not just on the way, but physically here, yeah, just across the bay. Um, okay, then moving on to um, other new business, number five, uh, update on Clean Harbors, harbor master Borg?
Okay, Clean Harbors, we have been working on this certification for quite some time. Um, Kyle's been knee deep in it and we are, this is one of those things where we're like 75% complete, however. He has been assigned harbor finance over the last couple of months, he's been uh, there's just been so many things going on and this has kind of fallen on the, on the wayside, so we are very close. Um, we've got the approval from the council or their support, so that's good. Um, it's basically just finishing out our checklist and submitting. So it's pretty much uh, administrative at this point, but we're moving forward, I'm hoping that August we can hang the flag, so. Um, I'm, I gotta give, again, I gotta give kudos to Kyle, man, the guy's been amazing and uh, my hat's off to him, so. My whole crew's just been amazing, picking up all the slack where we needed to and, and uh, really filling in and doing the job, so. Under some really crummy conditions too, weather, weather hasn't been all that summer yet, so. Um, my crew's done a fantastic job, so that's where we're at with Clean Harbors.
Any comments, questions? Um, agenda number, agenda item number eight, informational items, do we have anything on that? Nothing? Uh, and then commission comments is the next thing on the agenda. Is there any commission comments or additional commission comments? Commissioner Lo?
Uh, just as a reminder that the wish wash is coming up June 21st, that's all.
Uh, seeing other ones, I, I guess I'll uh, contribute some feedback since there are another commission comments, but I'll keep it short. Um, as you guys have all noticed, there's an abundance of cruise ships in town now and uh, spending a lot of time here that I do in the summer and um, my partners and I, running this business can tell you that there's uh, there's definitely an uptick in stuff going on around town. It, and I wanted to share this feedback in a way, I don't know where to share it, but this is maybe a great forum for it, the harbor's busy. People are visiting, they're coming over from both cruise ship terminals, not just the Princess, not just the Huna, not just Phillips, but there's um, and it's interesting because I do hear, um, well, my wife mostly, she's here every day, all day, she hears some businesses saying, wow, it's just so slow in town today. And they, we can't do anything to keep the door from swinging open with, besides locking it, so. Um, just passing along that there is plenty of opportunity for um, man, for just more stuff to happen in town, it's, it's exciting to see, there's been, there's been no shortage of hiccups with the uh, the new um, terminal and the things that go on or whatever, but from my perspective, it's cool to see the harbor even on days where, and I'm thinking, why is it windy and rainy and there are so many boats getting launched? There are so many people sort of wandering about with foreign speaking accents and luggage and it's just uh, while we may not get some giant boost that we see, it's uh, we're, we're seeing it and feeling it and for sure, somebody who's around a lot, I'm, I'm seeing it, that's it's exciting to me, we're going in the right direction, so. I know there are other commissioners here that are helping that to happen, Ms. Loane. Uh, you know, thank you for what you do and uh, harbor master Borg and everybody else and administration for sort of making all that stuff happen. There are for sure two sides of the opinion, but from my humble opinion, it's really cool to see what you're growing, so, thank you. You may, harbor master Borg.
Okay, a couple of things that I just didn't bring up because I wasn't sure if I could. Um, Dakota Fanning was in town today, that's kind of cool, but got one little cooler. Um, this afternoon, we've been working for the past couple of weeks actually on this visit, but uh, Secretary of the EPA, um, Lee Zeldin was in town today. And Jackie got the opportunity to take him around, show him a couple of different spots here that are affected by um, by the Environmental Protection Agency and things that kind of fall under their purview. So uh, they did a visit up to um, the Buckner Building, out Shuck and Cove Road, and also DeLong Dock, so that's very exciting. Uh, he left here and went on to another area to visit, but they've been doing a statewide visit. Um, but super awesome to have him in town today and kind of a surprise to a lot of people, myself included, so. Um, but yeah, he's been working with his security detail for the last couple of weeks and just putting things together. Um, and we also had visits from two different individuals with Merad who handle the money for um, the DeLong Dock rebuild, which is what we're trying to shoot for. Um, I think we're looking at 30, 40 million, somewhere around there, but to have the heavy hitters from Merad actually show up, um, directors from um, from DC and from the state, uh, well, for the district, the area um, is just, I mean, we're on the map, we're getting noticed and it's great, so I think we're moving in the right direction and we just gotta, you know, gotta stay relevant, that means, you know, getting as many people in here as we can and showing them what we got, so, pretty cool.
Thanks, harbor master Borg. Was that, um, is the Merad visits like a direct, possibly a direct result of visits to DC, the time that you guys are putting in?
Absolutely, they are, yeah.
That's awesome. Any other commission comments after that? Next would be citizen comments.
No one has signed in.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any responses to those? No, got it. Okay, uh, is there any further business? Anyone? There being no further business, this um, meeting is adjourned at seven o'clock.